Good morning. It is Wednesday, May the 22nd, 2019. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas. It is 9:00 a.m. We are meeting at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. The first item on our agenda is called "Meeting to Order." We'll have our invocation. We'll ask Urban Charles Thompkins if, again, you would lead us in that invocation. Then we'll also have the pledge to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Would you please rise for the invocation and the pledges?
Let us pray. Father God, we come thank you for this chance to come together with your Father. That is a purpose. Father, without you, we cannot resolve this purpose. We thank you for the peace that you have given us. And Father, even this county, Grimes County, which, Father, is an outstanding county, thank you for the peace that you have given us that we're able to work out the differences and every need is being met. And rest your blessings upon this court, upon the judge, and upon everybody that is presiding. And, Father, we know that you are the highest judge of all, and we thank you in Jesus's name.
Jesus. Amen.
You didn't pray for our money tree. You know we're in the budget season.
There's a budget.
We're in the budget season, but I just need to pray for that money tree, okay?
But let me say it this way. Father, your word says you will supply all our needs according to your riches and glory.
Amen.
Amen.
Will you join us in the pledges? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Let's lead Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Would you be seated, please? We will now move to the second item on our agenda, which is public comments. If you have public comments, we'd ask that you come to the podium, identify yourself, and if you will, try to limit your comments to two minutes or less. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is David Tollis. I'm proud to say that I'm a resident of Plantersville, Texas. Been a while since I've attended Commissioners' Court. Did y'all miss me?
Yes.
I will be very soon. I'm here to ask the court to reactivate the Grimes County Subregional Planning Commission. Grimes County needs positive economic development, and a unified, organized, and focused planning commission will be a fantastic tool to add into our ongoing economic development initiatives. The time is right for this to happen. Please place this on the Commissioners' Court agenda in the very near future and ask interested parties to participate in the discussion. It goes without saying that this is the right vehicle for us to evaluate the Texas Central High Speed Rail boondoggle so that we can make an honest decision on whether this is the right project for the residents of Grimes County. Thank you to everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you, David.
We'll see you soon.
All right.
Hang on, Harry. He's walking soft and carrying a big stick.
J. Lafferty, veteran service officer for Grimes County. Just a reminder, Monday is Memorial Day, the day that we remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. The veterans of farm wars are going to be having their poppy program. It's going to be at several locations around town, including TSC.
Texas Business Tractor Supply and Garage Brothers, to hopefully announce the last lot. We'll be handing out buddy poppies, and if you want to contribute, otherwise, just wear the poppy with pride.
Is that throughout the weekend, Memorial Day? Saturday?
Just Saturday.
Saturday at those locations?
Yes.
And that is a VFW project.
Yes. Just don't forget our veterans' past and present.
Just remember, Monday is Memorial Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As some of y'all are aware, the town of Anderson recently agreed to turn West Buffington in front of the annex into a one-way street. TechDOT has agreed to replace the signage. I just was notified this morning. They are going to be out on Monday, June 3rd, to change the signage. As of that day, it will be one-way eastbound coming in from Highway 90 headed towards the courthouse. You'll no longer be able to head out from the circle to Highway 90. So that's all going to happen that Monday morning. TechDOT is saying their crews will be out here bright and early, so it should happen before the morning rush, hopefully. But it may happen during the day if their schedule doesn't work, and you may have it switched while you're parked out there. We are going to be working on some repairs in that parking lot, and I'm going to try and have things coordinated so we can have the striping redone that weekend also, so everything will be set to go. It'll be a big change. People are used to driving that way for many, many years. And be alert, because there will be some people that are going to make some mistakes for a while. But I think it'll be beneficial to the overall flow of traffic on Buffington and help with the parking situation also.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Did you get all that, Matthew?
Good morning. Mary Ann Waters. Just wanted to let everybody know that Sunday, St. Joseph Catholic Church having their annual bazaar. Of course, we have lots of barbecue, fair, games, auction items, so everybody, please come and support our church. Thank you.
What day did you say again?
Sunday.
And time? Does it start?
Serving the meal at 11:00.
Are there any other public comments?
Little league.
Put me on the spot.
Matthew Burren with the Nupset Examiner and Grand Pan Little League President. I just want to invite everybody out to our closing ceremonies and end-of-year party June 1st, and it's going to be there at the Little League Field on Manly Street. We have a lot to celebrate this year. We were able to give out, I believe, 13 scholarships this year for players that would normally not be able to play. And we also had one special needs kid, or actually, two special needs kids, join our league this year and were able to play and participate with the regular teams. So we have a lot to celebrate, and we're also going to have our board elections that Saturday as well.
What time?
It starts at 1:00, and it'll end at 5:00. It'll be barbecue, water slides, depending if y'all want to get on the water slide. But it's just going to be a good time, music, and just a big party, softball game, if anybody's interested in that as well.
Thank you.
So y'all are all invited to join us.
Are you running for president again? Do we need to come out and vote for you?
I don't know about president. I'm running for the board again, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And final request, are there any further public comments? Are you here? Are you? Oh, you're just putting the top on your...
It was a fly.
Well, I thought you were bringing somebody. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to Consent Agenda Items. Number three, which is Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims I have one question. Our 424 account are posted. It's $4,000. Is that reloading the machine? Is that the machine in Human Resources?
Yes.
And...
And then monthly, as the departments use it, it's journal entry back into that line item.
So as we've been going through these budget hearings, and each department comes in with $75, or $100, or $150, is that $4,000 being dispersed to those departments? Or is that additional postage that they're budgeting?
Now, we buy $4,000 worth at a time.
Okay.
And then, monthly, Human Resources gives the auditor's office a report of usage by department.
Okay.
And then we do journal entries and charge it out to the departments on a monthly basis.
And that's...
And so it goes back in... The money that's charged to the departments goes back into the 424.
Okay. How many times a year do we do? We reload usually?
Maybe four times through the year.
So about $16,000?
Judge, not all departments use that machine. Some still use stamps, private stamps.
Well, I mean, and I'm fine with all... I understand that they use it, but, I mean, we were, as we've been hearing in the budget hearings yesterday, and today, and tomorrow, Monday, each department has been, not each, but most every department's been coming in with a budget number on postage.
When we have elections, voters uses quite a bit of it.
Right.
And we have to reload it. You know, we know exactly when we're getting low, and we'll request, you know, we'll send in a purchase claim.
So the question, I guess, are we over-killing on the accounting and auditing of that? I mean, is it necessary for us to bill it back to each of the departments like that?
Not if you aren't interested in how much each department is using.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering how much value we get out of that information when we're going to load it at $4,000 a pop? And, you know, then you're spending time keeping track of, okay, District Clerk sent five letters, and HR sent two.
The machine does it automatically. And every month, I'll just pull it up at the end of month, pull the report up. It shows how much each department's, you know, how much postage went through that machine.
Right.
And it's given to the auditor's office, and then I keep a copy of it. And we've been doing that for a long time.
Now, once it's given to the auditor's department, is it charged to that department?
Yeah. Right.
Okay. I think that's maybe where...
Okay. So I'll ask the question again, though. In the opinion of the auditors, is that information of value to us?
Well, it's kind of like other line items in each individual department, where you have lost supplies, or rentals and contracts, whatever. It's there for information as the county court sees, Commissioners' Court sees, need for it. If you don't see a need for keeping track of how much postage each department uses, absolutely put it all in 424, but we'll have to take the postage from those departments and put it into that 424.
So if John Doe taxpayer asks, hey, where's that money gone to? We can say to them, okay, 25% of it's been spent with elections this quarter because we had an election. Okay. And I guess that information's of value to the public.
You could still keep up with the information, but coding in the department that uses the postage meter, so take away the postage line item for every budget that's out there, and stick it all in one item, you could still do the record.
It seems like it'd be a smarter thing to do.
I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, Judge, I mean, you still have departments that utilize old-fashioned stamps rather than running it to the machine, so...
Are you picking on me?
Not at all.
No, like the JGs, they usually buy stamps.
Right. And for those that do, I don't have a problem with it being a line item up there. I just, you know, I mean, we're looking at different softwares and things like that to eliminate more data entry and duplicated entry, and I'm just asking if it's of value for us to have that information, or if we can still get it from the meter on the machine, then maybe we can take out one step, and now we've got time to do something else more productive.
Well, and you take out the fact that the tendency of each department is to try to pad that budget a little bit for fear that they don't know what that number's going to be.
Sir, they wouldn't do that.
And some other counties, let's say.
Okay.
So the thought would be, if you stick it in your, within your purview, then it's up to the court how much pad you want to stick in there. Now, you may have, obviously, a fluctuation when there's an election, but then you don't have 25, whatever, 30 department heads and elected officials that are all putting in extra $100 bucks or whatever it is. It's you as a court decide whether or not.
Right.
And then you do a budget amendment if you have an overrun.
Okay. Didn't mean to belabor it, but, question. Are there any other... Is there an intelligent question on the list of claims?
If there are no questions, I make the motion that we approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Consent Agenda Item Number Three by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
We will now go to Agenda Item Number Four, Tax Risk Management Consultant Lisa McKay, presentation of Zero Lost Time Safety Award to the court in recognition of no lost workdays during 2018 coverage year.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
We are tickled to death to have you here.
Thank you.
On this occasion.
Yes.
For this agenda item.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
I'm Lisa McKay. I'm the Risk Management Consultant for Grimes County. I'm pleased to be here this morning. I'm going to read what would be our press release for you. Grimes County has earned a 2018 Zero Lost Time Safety Award from the Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool for its record of no lost workdays for the 2018 coverage year. Through its commitment to safe practices among county employees, Grimes County works to reduce employee injuries and obtain substantial savings for taxpayers by minimizing workers' compensation costs. A total of 115 Tax Risk Management Pool members participating in our workers' compensation program received this new award this year. The Risk Management Pool has provided counties with protection against risk and liabilities for 40 years. Through our risk control programs and services that are delivered to more than 400 members, we help Texas counties promote safety and save tax dollars. So on behalf of Grimes County, I would like to present your 2018 award for Zero Lost Time.
Excellent.
Let's go back to the judge. Okay.
And I gladly accept that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Happy to be in the pool.
And you did state how many counties did receive this?
Yes, there were 115 total out of our workers' compensation program.
That's actually pretty good.
Yes. We'd like more.
Sure. We'd like 254.
Right. That's exactly right. And just a reminder, on our safety program, if y'all have not spent your funds yet for safety equipment, the personal protection equipment, those funds may still be available. I'm not sure if I don't...
They're available until July.
Right. You've got until July. And I wanted to say, maybe your law enforcement has spent their funds, but I don't think road and bridge has. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Five, Consider and Approve Items for Auction With Proceeds to be Returned to IT Department. See Attachment Number Five. Mr. Ken?
Hello, my name is Greg Ken. I'm the Director of IT, and I'm requesting seven very old laptops to be submitted to auction, and whatever funds are generated, return to the IT budget.
Will these even sell?
Well, we might get $3 for all of them. They're very old. Yeah, they're over 10 years, like, close to 12 years and eight. And they're huge.
I mean, talk to Cimbellas and let them sell for boat anchors or something. That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Is there any software on these computers?
The drives have been removed.
The drives are removed. Okay.
Yeah, they're pretty much cheap. We put them in the auction, so to entice the person to buy the full auction room.
These are more collectible than useful.
Yeah, probably more collectible than useful.
Can I make the motion that we approve items for auction with proceeds to be returned to the IT department?
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Five by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Mallon. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, you just mentioned the salvage room. If you're wanting these returned specifically back to you, I think we're going to have to sell them separately.
What was that, Commissioner?
I had mentioned putting them in the auction room, but these items will actually be sold separately.
Okay.
So that we can keep track and return the money back to the court.
Got you. Okay. That doesn't change the motion, does it?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Agenda Item Number Six, Emergency Management Subdivision Coordinator David Lilly and Commissioner Precinct One Chad Mallory Review and Approve Mr. Walston's Platte for the CCC Estate subdivision that divides his 21.0, 802 acres of land into eight lots. Is that what this handout is all about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Judge, Commissioners, you may remember last month, the property owner, I'm just thinking of the right, right? Property owner, Mr. Walton, had requested from the Commissioners a variance consideration for dividing his property. This is located on County Road 108, just literally right outside the city limits of Viola. And you had tabled that issue and further discussion with Mr. Walton. He decided instead to go ahead and proceed with plating that property. So he basically dropped the variance request, and now this is the platte that he has submitted to us. Harry and I both have reviewed it. We looked at an initial version, and there were a few minor changes that we suggested to Mr. Walton, and he complied with those changes. And we feel that this platte is basically sufficient and in keeping with the subdivision rules and regulations.
Riding so small, where is this street?
On the north side.
On the north?
So actually, we're looking at it...
Yes, I see.
Yeah, there you go. There's a private drive here, and then this is 108. So all the lots have access, and they meet the minimum size. In fact, they're all, I think, the only one, the only one that's close to that is Lot Number One on the bottom, which is 1 acre.
Are they going to put in a road from 108 down?
No. In fact, it's not really pertinent to this platte, but the property owner to the south, Mr., I guess, Mr. Smith, is looking to procure that one acre lot, and that'll be absorbed with his. But again, that's not pertinent to this platte.
So that's not part of the platte, then?
It is with the platte, because right now, Mr. Walton still owns that one acre.
Oh, okay, so he does.
Yeah, the sale has not gone through. Just, they're looking at how they procure that lot. And if they do, then they'll absorb it into their lot.
But if they don't, is it big enough for septic and living quarters?
It is the minimum size. There is public water available, and, you know, they understand that, you know, it would have to meet the requirements for the size of the lot, also for water and septic.
Without being able to see the numbers, how wide is the lot?
It's pretty narrow.
Well, like I said, that lot, so he doesn't currently own that lot.
He does. But again, Mr. Smith is looking to possibly procure. That's what Mr. Walton explained to me. But that has not been finalized yet, so for the purposes of this platte, he wanted to go ahead and platte that one acre out, just in case Mr. Smith opts not to buy it, you know.
Well, then that would leave a lot over there for potential private roadway.
Yes.
And a platte then.
And that also, we looked at the private drive that exists that runs past that property, and as you notice, it's actually, it's not even, it's not designed as an easement. It's actually platted out. But that one lot would be, have to be granted a permanent easement to be able to get access onto that private drive.
So repeat that one more time. You're saying, are you saying that a drive was not platted into this?
It is. It's part of Mr. Walton. He's keeping this larger portion, the two acre, or the 5.663 acres, and his private drive is actually cut out of the platte for that. And, but the one acre lot is included with the other lots that are being platted, and that lot would have a permanent easement granted onto his gravel road.
David, if you don't mind, if you can get Mr. Peter to hold one side of that platte.
Yeah.
Can you bring it up here?
Sure.
This is...
Can you?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see on there.
Yeah. What is this right here, in between that lot and the other lots?
This is a part of his property.
That's all part of Lot Three?
Yes.
Two?
No, Lot Two.
Lot Two.
The 5.663 acres.
So it could also go back into Lot Two? Does it adjourn Lot Two?
What's that?
The one.
This acre? Yes, it's on the southern side of Lot Two. It's Lot Number One.
Okay.
And if you look real close, there is a currently platted, or currently reported access easement along that driveway, so there wouldn't need to be any change to the platte if that one acre tracks at the back is sold. Here are the callouts for 30 foot line, access easement, reported, multiple volume pages.
So it is recorded easement?
So there is a recorded easement there already, so they're covered. I'll get that to sell separately.
We have so many problems many times when they're not recorded.
Right.
And people just automatically assume they can go through somebody's property to get there. So this one is recorded in the volumes?
And that's been reported in the past, so that was an arrangement that was made previously with the other property owners.
Okay.
Thank you. So I guess that one acre, Lot One, I guess I'm a little concerned about it. I mean, there is an access easement, but if the roadway ever deteriorated to where somebody, there might be a complaint from a resident that they can't get to their home on a platted, you know, on a platted subdivision.
Uh-huh.
That's my only concern would be Lot One, if that one.
Okay.
Is this going to turn into a dharal hall? Well, like, it'd just be for one lot, but it's still, you know, that potential.
To get the lot wanted.
I'm sorry.
To get the lot wanted, good.
Is this something we need to table, and you put your eyes on and talk to people out there? Well, it said that he's wanting to absorb it into his five acre.
Mr. Smith is looking to procure it. Again, there's not been any finalizing of any sale. That's just something Mr. Walton had mentioned that...
Is Smith is an adjacent landowner?
Yes, and he does have that. Permanent easement is granted to his property also.
Okay.
It's the one below. The one above it is Mr. Walton.
Yeah. I'd almost feel better with that lot left out, and if it's bought, it's bought separate, not as part of this platte.
Can I make a suggestion? In fact, I can't...
Yes, please.
I don't recall this being set for preliminary platte approval, so if you want to call this preliminary platte approval, then you could keep it on track as we always do.
Yeah.
And then set it for a final. And the purpose of preliminary is to announce to you all, this thing is coming, give you an opportunity to review it, and then set it for a final.
Yeah. That sounds good to me. This is just an informative preliminary platte.
Right. It says, "Review and approve the platte for blah, blah." You could say, "We're going to grant, we're going to approve the preliminary platte and leave it at that." And then you haven't held up progress on it, but preliminary is typically for announcement to the world, is certainly not the approval of the final. If there is a layout of a portion of the subdivision, creates access for one of the portions of the subdivision, that potentially triggers the bond issue, the issue of whether do you require a bond or not. So if you're raising that issue, I haven't seen the platte, so I don't know what you guys are even talking about.
There you go.
Can I lie? The platte's on my desk.
Oh, okay. There, yeah, it's one hanging out down there. It's on the access easement. That's kind of hanging out by itself. Well, Commissioner, go ahead.
I have a question. Does it meet our subdivision rules? I mean, does it, is it anything in there that would go against the subdivision rule that you know that's, Mr. Walker?
Now, there are no variances being requested to the subdivision rules, and I would suggest the access has previously been created through that access easement. This is not a new creation. It's just being utilized in the subdivision platte for that one acre lot at the south side.
So yes, in our determination, it doesn't...
So, yes, in our, in our determination, it does meet the subdivision rules. Yes.
But I, I guess, I guess I'm not extremely familiar with the rules, but does it require roadways to every lot? And, and the wording somewhere in there, or?
You have to have access to a public road, but it does not require that you have frontage on a public road and access easement suffices. And we have, uh, no criteria for the width or length of an access easement, uh, which, that's a whole different subject. But under the current rules, this meets our standards.
Okay.
And it's legal access.
And I can't remember any specific examples, but there have been examples in the past where the Commissioners Court has approved similar access easements, in some cases even where it was not even platted out, but it was actually just simply designated as an access easement, but still owned by the original property owner. So just letting you know that that has, that has been approved.
Yeah, being owned by the original's fine, but it's that one acre right there that somebody can't get down the private drive.
He's platted out that one little portion next to the one acre, uh, where, you know, he's granting access, uh, you know, continuing the access that's already been established for that gravel road to that one acre lot.
I'm just worried if, if there's no more access, I mean, if they can't get down because the road deterior, the drive deteriorates to a point where they can't get to their property. That's my only concern with that one lot there.
I think if, if you wanted to, as the attorney has suggested, go ahead and approve this on a preliminary basis, we'd get back to the property owner and have further discussions.
Okay. Sure.
And it's possible that he may come back and say that they've already moved forward or ready to move forward with the sale of that one acre lot to Mr. Smith.
And it could be taken out.
A mortgage company or a bank is gonna wanna see a platte before they will approve that. So that may be, again, I don't know if that's for sure, but I know he did mention that Mr. Smith was looking to procure that one acre lot. And again, it's up to the landowner how he wants to do his property. But if he knows that that's the only reason that it's being held up, uh, that may provide the impetus to go ahead and move forward with that sale, and, and then that would resolve that.
Or at least that could be part of the, just to meet some bounds for, just for that property versus the platte, I would think, too.
Do you wanna make the motion to eliminate him?
Yeah, I move to approve the preliminary platte, as presented.
I second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number six by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. And this is a preliminary. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anxious to be moving to agenda item number seven, it'd be Roden Bridge Engineer, Harry Walker.
Good morning, everyone. It, um, we have a water line permit, a one-line installation permit from Wixon Creek S U D on County Road 186. Um, 186 runs between 3090 and 185, sort out west of the Carlos area. Um, this is a small diameter line. It's not suited for a fire hydrant installation. It'll just be a service to one home. We're recommending approval of that permit.
Move to approve the water line installation permit for Wixon Creek S U D on County Road 186.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any discussion further? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Your Roden Bridge report, sir.
The, we've been doing, um, we rented a recliner, um, here a couple weeks ago. We've been doing some work, uh, last week, uh, doing the reclamation on County Road 118, and did a couple more test sections, uh, with the base stabilization, uh, material that we used on County Road 446 a month or so ago. Uh, that worked out really well. We tried a couple of variations to sort of bring the cost of that overall process down. Uh, that's working real well. Uh, I'm, I'm very encouraged. I think this has got some, some real potential to help us extend the life of some of our roads. Uh, so I wanna see it, you know, out in the weather for a year or so and see how it holds up. But it looks really good. The, the roads are really hard, and, uh, we've kinda figured out a way to work it so that we can get a better finish on it, uh, within the, the, it sets up fairly quickly so that you don't have a lot of working time. Uh, I think we've kinda resolved that issue. So I'm real encouraged about this, so you may hear some more of this. Uh, we are also continuing, uh, to use that recliner on other projects in the county. Uh, it's particularly well-suited for where we have deteriorated asphalt roads, and you actually go in and grind that back up into part of the base material, and put it all back to uniform material, uh, rather than have, try to go through, you know, you can only patch pot holes so many times, and then you pick up nothing but punches, patches, and Kennedy can start over. So that's what we're working on this right now. Uh, elsewhere, we're continuing foot block of roads. Uh, we've continued to have a rash of trees down because of some of the recent storms. We've been doing a lot of cleanup work recently. Uh, we're hauling a lot of rock, uh, to different roads, uh, when, you know, when the crews are available and when we can get trucks, things. Uh, ditch crews have been working, doing a major project on 211. That's been ongoing for a while. Uh, we're also preparing, uh, for 403 and 404, uh, for repaving this summer. Uh, those are some roads that are under a road agreement with the property owner that paid for the paving of those in the past, and we're getting prepared to repave them, 'cause the, the pavement on that is deteriorated badly now. Uh, and then we're just other routine things. Again, better stretch the weather, so we're trying to take advantage of it.
Are you gonna be using that recliner on 403 or 404?
Yes.
Yeah. You, you can't really tell it now, but 404 was paved at one time. There's, there's still sections that have some asphalt on it. Uh, the asphalt has held up better on 403. And the other thing we're gonna do on 403, because that is down in the sort of the river bottom areas, it gets a lot of water, uh, a lot of clay soil and, and poor soils. Uh, we're gonna do some base stabilization on that, and just rely on, uh, to try and make that road a little more durable also.
I'd like to say thank you. I sent you the text message I got about 417. Uh, they're very pleased in that area, uh, the ditching that was done.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item number eight. County Judge Yofa, consider and take action to select salary grievance committee according to Local Government Code 152.014 and 152.015. And that's where we need to have a draw from those that have been in, uh, grand jury pool in the event we do have any salary grievances that are presented to us by elected officials.
Should I cut, maybe cut them up and then redraw them from ahead? So what you want?
That'd be great. And our option, and I'll, I see that our attorney has a book open.
You all have your books, right?
We have our books, we do. But, uh, the option...
Quit texting me, Commissioner Cox.
You are my book. The, the option on this is we can have nine members from the grand jury pool to serve. I think last year, that's what we ended up doing, is it not?
Instead of having elected officials, a combination of them.
Right.
I don't recall.
No, I think we had three, uh...
I don't recall choosing all...
Um, no, I'm sorry. We had, we had elected officials, but we had three.
Yes.
With six alternates of us.
But we had a discussion on whether or not we should continue to do that or make it all grand jury, didn't we?
Right, there, there was a discussion.
But I don't know if there was ever consensus.
I think there was a discussion. I don't think there was a decision.
Well, if you're calling upon me to tell you my recollection, my recollection was that there was a discussion and there was a decision that the court decided to go with only three members. And I will tell you that, and you're not asking my opinion, but you leave a circumstance if you bring nine folks who are in the community that aren't aware of how salaries have gotten to where they are, or what, uh, the circumstances may be. They may have a better understanding of what the going rate for things is in the community. But I can tell you from the couple of hearings that we've had, um, where I've been an elected official on that body, those folks appear, um, they, they don't wanna step on toes. They don't wanna offend anybody. And the member, the elected officials, uh, while I wouldn't say are happy to offend people, uh, they're willing to say, "We think this is an unreasonable request that's being made." Those three folks that are thrown into this, uh, mix, um, they're very reluctant to serve, as far as I can tell. And, um, they don't wanna rock the boat, and they don't wanna offend their elected officials, uh, 'cause that's what they'd be doing. And so, um, you may obviously get people, um, that feel differently, but that was the experience that I've seen with the folks that have been brought in and forced to serve essentially. I, I say that, it's not actually, they're not forced, they can say no, but, uh, that, that's been my perception.
Correct me, or inform me, there are nine people that do serve on that grievance committee, correct?
Yes, sir.
In the last one we had, we had three citizens and six.
Correct.
Just the sheriff, tax assessor, county treasurer, clerk, district clerk.
Those are the ones we had serve.
And county attorney, our criminal district attorney.
Yeah, and a criminal district attorney is a specific label. And there are those counties that have combined county attorney and district attorney. That office becomes criminal district attorney. So that person that's described there is not your DA, it's your CA. So if you go that way, you can't avoid me, all right?
You got the sheriff, county tax assessor, county treasurer, county clerk, district clerk, county attorney. And the remaining are the members of the public.
Where did she gotta cut them?
She went to cut them, she just went into Dinesh's office. She'll be right back. I don't even know how y'all wanted to do this. Can you read that list out again?
The sheriff?
Uh-huh.
County tax assessor collector, county treasurer, county clerk, district clerk, and the county attorney.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, and three, three members of the public.
Judge is presiding. You're the chairman.
He's the chairman, but you don't give a vote.
Judge, I gotta be honest with you, I've read the statute multiple times. It makes me laugh every time I read it, but I never knew that an appropriate container was a yellow...
If it's from Dollar General, it's a county store, it's, it's appropriate. Cherie, will you make sure you capture the names? Number one, it's going to be Marilyn Burk, B U R K, Anderson, Texas. And I'm gonna draw nine, knowing we only need three, so we have six alternates. So that's number one. Number two is Mark Powell. Mr. Powell has a Waller, Texas address.
County.
P O W T L L, that's number two. Number three is Lonza Feldhans, Navasota.
What was the last name?
F E L D H A N S.
If nobody refuses, those would be the three. Alternate one, number four, will be Rebecca Simmons, out of the North Zulch Committee, Community. Kevin Holliday, out of Navasota. Would be the fifth draw, second alternate. And a Reed Schaefer, S C H A E F E R, out of Navasota. That'll be the sixth, the third alternate. We'll have Larry George, G E O R G E, out of Navasota. Be the fourth alternate, the seventh draw. Patrick Berry, B E R R Y, out of Navasota, be number eight draw, fifth alternate, and I guess the final, would be Linda Suarez, S U A R E Z, out of the Bedi's City. Okay, Nick, you'll, you'll keep those. Thank you, ma'am. We'll make sure that Cherie has a listing of that. So we will send a letter of notification to these individuals just to give them a heads up, and as we did last year, they have the opportunity to decline or say they're on a cruise, or vacation, or graduation, or wedding, so we know we can go to the next one and have that committee ready and in hand in the event it is needed.
And Judge, because it's set for action, would you indulge me and take a motion in a second to approve using the elected officials and the three that you've just pulled, which was alternates?
And the yellow bag is your container?
Yes, if you so choose.
Sure. Judge, I'll move that, uh, we take action to select a salary grievance committee consisting of the specified elected officials in the code, as well as the three previously named residents of the county, in addition to having the alternates.
Okay. Is there a second?
That's it.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorization County Judge's signatory. My recommendation is hold what we have, no action. However, there is a high pressure moving into the area, so we would wanna, maybe, David, if you, for next Wednesday's meeting, give a status check on Tuesday before, so we make a, a good move on that. So no action on agenda number nine? If that's acceptable? Okay? We will now ask for any updates on the strategic plan, agenda item number 10, any to be reported at this time. I know if Commissioner Dobianski wasn't on vacation, he would have an update on one of his responsibilities, but we'll hold that news.
He'll probably have an update on the, um, high-speed, um, internet ring, I'm, BB Cog, ring.
With that, is there a motion on agenda item number 11?
I make the motion, you adjourn.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 11 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.